Chapman?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Green?
Present.
Cruzing?
Here.
Blamer?
Here.
That review be the answer.
Excuse what she called it.
Excuse, she called it. We'll have the approval of the agenda.
They had a couple action items.
Amended.
Yeah, amended. We've had hydraulic study, approval of hydraulic study, and approval of the signed committee's mail addresses.
The others? So with the additions, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Support?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes of October 8th. Any questions, Dono? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 8th. Any motion, how about a second? We have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment, eleven minutes and three minutes.
I have one thing, Joe. Just real quick, I looked Friday online and then today online to see if the agenda was on the new Central Lake website for this meeting, and it wasn't there. So I knew you were going to try to get them online prior to the meeting, which makes sense.
Right.
Did you get it, Corey?
No, I don't think I saw it come through. So I'll double check.
I sent it on Thursday. I'm sorry.
It should have been here, Joe. Okay. All right, so your place is on there. Today's one is on there. Absolutely. Okay, that's right.
Anybody else?
I didn't see it. I was just wondering, as related to the new website, I noticed that there are minutes, meeting minutes, missing. And I was just wondering when we could expect to have minutes on the website, and also I wanted to know if I could be educated on how long guys retain minutes.
Actually, I don't know. I, the school business, we kept them forever, but I don't know if you're...
Forever. Right? You have to keep them in minutes. Per, ten years.
Including video or audio minutes, recorded? That's only a year, right?
Audio, audio is, audio is the moment you do a written. The new retention schedule. As soon as you put them in writing, you can get rid of the audio.
It would be reasonable to think that you wouldn't go back ten years online with meeting minutes.
No, 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 we don't, we're not gonna, no.
You have to keep them in a records...
We found them, right?
Yes, what we've actually looking at doing is keeping a years bank on the website is what we're trying to do, and then they're supposed to be housed here in the office.
Available for printing off or whatever?
Yes, we know we're lacking, I think, three months in the written minutes, and I want to say four months in the audio. Some of the audio ones are a little difficult to get on there for us, as we have to transpoise them from a cassette tape that was used back in the beginning of the year to electronic, and so it's taken us a little bit of time to do some of them. Again, I thought, I got ahold of the minutes myself, and I don't believe I delivered them before you get put on the website yet, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we'll move on to reports. First of all, police report, Scott.
Thank you. Hopefully, everybody's just got a chance to look at the reports. This month's another business, the last month we get busy, but different kind of busy. You'll see that traffic stops previous month was like fifteen per month, this month it was forty-five. And it's just a reflection of having more time to be out on patrol. Previous month, when you spend a lot of time on investigation, follow-ups, obviously, if I'm in the office doing paperwork, I'm not on the road making traffic stops. So it's just a different kind of busy, and I don't know why. It's just not like we were looking for more drivers, it's just they were leaving some essential days. But if you look at their forty-five traffic stops, fifty-some verbal warnings, I think there was only nine actual migrations or something. And everything else is pretty much standard as far as meetings and stuff like that.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Sam?
DPW report, we flushed water mains up there in very top. We see it was five hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water. We estimated that we flushed out from our meter readings, our master meters in our wellhouses. Meter readings are done for the quarter. All of the villages, day parks and parks, I guess, all the bathrooms have been winterized, ready for the winter, and all the picnic tables have been put up in store. And Halloween went very well. Just touch on the highlights of the month. Any questions?
No, but that's why I was just, no, but that's what my, I was talking about putting some in the paper instead. Thank you very much for it, and we just want to know the wording on that.
Yep. I guess Brownwood Acres donated twelve...
I was gonna touch on it. Twelve garbage cans to the village. So I took her up on that, brand-new fifty-two gallon garbage cans. I haven't stored any at the shop, and I'm in contact with the school to see if the arts class would like to do on painting of the garbage cans to fit where we're gonna put them. I'd like to put some of them uptown when I'm down to Thurston Park. I thought let students run wild with their imagination. As long as the arts teacher approves it, I think it'd be a wonderful thing. It might, it might help with some of the trash people throw. I wanted to say thank you to Mary, I don't know if she showed up or not, for donating them to us. Wonderful suggestion.
Yep, I'd like to have Joe write us a nice little thank you, and actually have the council say okay to put it in the paper. I think it was great she did it for the village, and if the school paints them, we'll do the same thing for the school, but I think it'd be great to recognize the fact that she, we didn't go ask her or nothing, she just said we have, she'd love to, or just a small letter in the paper to...
We're talking about Marjiter, right?
Mary. Not Mar.
Not Mar.
Please, that's, this is Steve Ditar's business out in Eastport.
Okay, so we're not talking about Mar, we're talking about...
Steve, Brownwood, Brownwood Acres, which is the business out in Eastport.
Got it. And his wife's name is Mary?
No, Mary, Mary works for him. So Mary, Mary's one who actually...
Isn't that his sister?
Mary, Mary's his sister.
It's his sister, yeah.
What's, Ditar?
No, Waller.
So she called and offered them, and I just liked to, it won't be a huge expenses.
Thank you.
Yep, well, that's fine.
Sam, I had already, someone suggested a garbage can by Village Market.
Oh, we have one.
Is there?
And Larry, I'm short on garbage cans, that's why when Mary made this offer, we built right on it.
As I remember trying to deal with complaints years ago, that garbage cans at certain spots between school and downtown was good because of the number of kids going down there. I'm not saying they used them.
Just to have a quick question about number sixteen, can you just real briefly explain the bidding procedure to us?
So that, the number, what's that?
Number sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yeah.
And what that is, is an M-88, where we go up and take the snow off the curbs. MDOT used to pay the county to do it, they'd do it once a month. So we said, we keep them clean now, we said why should the county get the money, that's why, and MDOT says, we will only pay you twenty-five hundred dollars.
So it's us submitting a bid to them, not...
Yes.
Reverse?
To a point, yeah.
Okay.
It's a part of a contract statement.
And when the village takes bids, what's the max limit? When do we determine when something goes out for a bid?
Guess that would be determined on what it is that we're looking at bidding on.
Is there like a dollar figure, that anything over a thousand bucks goes out for bid, or...
It's over two thousand.
In my case, anything over twenty-five hundred bucks.
Twenty-five hundred, you're like that, anything over twenty-five hundred.
Just for his department or the whole village?
That, anybody going, Sam and Scott, so.
Well, or the website, or any other thing, is what I'm trying to get at. So twenty-five hundred bucks is what you're saying? Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Moving on, committee reports.
No, I correspond, sorry, there, MDOT, so what that letter for Brownwood, do we want that written as a letter directly to Brownwood, or for the main paper?
I'd write, I'd like to see a little one in the citizen's paper, just to know if they have it in the paper, and at the same time, since you brought it, you do a very nice thank you letter. I heard it as, as an offer, didn't you? No, the idea is great. Kind of a little purpose, I would just write one up in the paper.
I like that style.
Talk about delegation.
All right, moving on, committee reports. Denise is not here, she called, she's ill. Moving on then to sewer and water.
Actually, we've had a very busy month. We'll start out with some of the easier things here. We got a hydraulic rate, or hydraulic study quote, or, yeah, a quote from Gordy Fraser, that we're gonna look at more in the action items. Our next one, we have, Sam was able to salvage a bunch of the old sewer parts and pumps off of the old Draco house next to the bank and eighty-eight, so we can resell those used parts later. Then going on to our main thing is the Dunlop water complaint follow-up. All the council members should have got a packet with that, pretty much stating everything that was involved with it. Maybe you'll find a synopsis, you'll find all the letters that have been written to her past, I believe it went all the way back to two thousand and seven. I spent some time talking with Mr. Larry Eckert, I went and talked with Mr. Patton at the time. Sam, we completed quite a bit of work. We did the study at her house, finding that pressures to be exactly as we expected them to be. The one thing that we did get a surprise on was she actually has a lot better flow rate than we would have assumed she would have. Most of the houses within the village have a four-and-a-half to five gallon a minute flow rate. She's approximately six gallons a minute on top of the hill. So the letter was sent to her, as you guys can see here, we sent a letter to her, which was a pretty much standard letter of a, just a, oh shoot, recommendation to the council from the sewer committee, that we take no adverse action, that we were good with what she has, and that we have done everything we possibly can to ensure that. So I guess it would be my recommendation as the sewer and water chair, that the council takes no further action, and Mrs. Dunlap's water complaint issue of limited pressure and supply.
Well, I would say that, having read that over a couple times, that's a pretty complete report, and I feel comfortable with it. I'm not sure what we'll hear from Mrs. Dunlap or Miss Dunlap or not, so. Anybody else have any problem with it, that we just, the ball is in her court?
Yes, I've got it.
Without any... Without any comment, then we're gonna accept that report, and I know it took a lot of time on Sam's part, and Joe's part, whoever else, I think Ken was in on it at times, so then we will move on, and that report will stand as our position on that matter. Any questions?
Okay, going on then, since we're good on that one, while we were at Mrs. Dunlap's house on the October tenth, we found Ms. Dunlap to be in noncompliance with our cross-connection ordinance. A letter was drafted, Mr. Mullins has sent the letter, so just so everybody knows that I'm sure this is gonna bring things back to life, it's gonna stir the pot, she's not gonna be happy, but unfortunately, that is the way it is, and...
That's what DQ requires, you don't have to go too much.
Yes, we have to follow through, but I just thought that since this has went out, it wasn't nothing that the council has to approve or do, Mr. Mullins is taking care of that on his end, but we should be aware of it because it will stir that pot, I'm sure.
The cross, cross-connection?
Yes, she's in cross-connection violation. Basically, she has no backflow prevention in her sprinkler system. Okay, so then, moving on, we got one more, the letter, the letter for Candy Coho, our flower lady that I was asked to write was done. I don't know if we need actual approval to send it, or if people want to know that it's me and send, everybody's got a copy of it. From that, I think everything's...
But you have to take into account what Candy and Candy is and what...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Candy Coho was our flower lady, took care of the curbs in Central Lake, the hanging baskets, our street scape areas. Basically, the letter to her was, Dear Candy of the Village of Central Lake, we'd like to, we'd like to extend their appreciation to you for the hard work you have done over the years on our behalf. You have worked hard to enhance the curbside appeal of the village, street scape, and to give the residents and visitors great gardens to enjoy, and your dedication shows the village of Central Lake, as well as the residents of Central Lake will miss you and the work you have done. On behalf of the entire council, we wish you success in all of your future endeavors. Thank you again for all your hard work throughout the village of Central Lake.
She's resigned?
Yes. I talked quite a bit with her, and it was a hard choice for her, she didn't want to. She likes doing it, but over the last couple of years, she hasn't really had any time off in the summers, as she works two other jobs also, so it was just a time constraints for her to do that, so. That's it for me, Larry.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Bill, law enforcement.
Oh, right. They had a very busy month. It was, they did a lot more road patrol as the, as the complaint investigation been done, so you see they had quite a few more traffic stops. Also, Chief Scott participated in the community placing in the fire prevention classes up at the school. Appreciate that. Well, that was pretty much it. That's all I got, I guess.
Thank you, Bill. Permits, Jeff?
There are no permits.
Thank you. Finance and personnel, Ken?
We're just, we're working on our new budget, we just, we had a committee meeting just before this meeting, so we've been working on that, but we had a committee meeting two weeks ago or so to put the preliminary budget together.
Yes, yes.
So we're working toward that, everything looks good, I think. The 101's close, as always. Our budget year, this year, I think we're coming out good, Sam, well, of course, it gets now, we really gotta watch it, because now we get into winter, so it depends on how hard winter hits, but I think, I think we're about where we thought we'd be at this point. We went a little over on a turn, like we talked about earlier, but that's just, it just happened, so. We're gonna address that a little ahead of you next year, but other than that, I think we're, I think we're moving on pretty good. We've put some work, with Sam's, Elf's, and Scott's, and Pat's, and everybody's, I think we're moving on good toward the next budget, so we're trying to stay a little bit ahead of it. So next month, we'll have a final budget for approval to bring to the council. Yeah, with Pat's help, with Pat's... So that'll be December, and then that'll give the council then a month to look at it, and hopefully we can come back in January and approve that budget. We won't be looking for approval next month, we'll just present it to the council, we'll get it out on the website, when we finally get the final, the budget we're looking to approve, and then that gives us a month, and then in January, we can pass it, and if something runs amok, that gives us February to come back and readdress it. So I think we're moving along real good, but I'd just like to thank Pat and Sam and Scott for making it easy on us.
And Sam was...
Yeah, we, yep, we're gonna under action items, so.
Okay. Parks and public property.
Yes, we're going to get Lyle back next year to run the park again, and I was down to the park every week this summer, at least once, a, once on a week, you know, checked with the people down there, when I'd see them, I'd ask them how they were satisfied that the park was running, and they were just, everybody said they were well satisfied. We did make a little bit of money on it, and we're hoping that we can continue to keep in the black, you might say, but we did talk about having grills put up there, and at one time, we did have them, and I had forgotten about them. The insurance company will not allow us to have any grills out there for anybody to use because of the danger, somebody leaving hot coals in there, and a child putting their hands in it, and we're done. So we're not putting any grills out, as much as we'd like to. The rest of the park is in good shape, and we're trying to keep it one of the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. The next thing is President's report, I just have a couple of comments. In reference to the flower places downtown, we did at first ask the Ladies Garden Club if they would be interested, and they, I was told, we're not, and they've got all they can handle in Minnesota. Well, they didn't want to do it. The other thing is just a comment that, and I meant to do it, and I tried once and didn't, is as I, as I'm leaving my position here, I will, I will try to put together a meeting between Ken, who I've not told about this, Stan Bean, and Denise Shooks. I've been the one talking with Denise in terms of the park, and trying to get the property that we don't own down there. So, and at the last comment, or time I spoke with her, it was she threw the help of Laura Sexton, the county clerk, had located a descendant of the originators, original owners, who lives in the Detroit area, and I imagine is probably a pretty old person at this age. And so I don't know where we are with that. The other thing was, there was, through her investigation, found out that there was information on the Thurston family, or whatever, at the Clark Library at Central Michigan University, and she was talking about going down there. So I think the best way to do, I'll, I'll try to, and Denise works up at the Bible Baptist Church, part-time, and find a time where Ken and Stan Bean, who has, and the township has offered to get in the game here, and bring that, Denise can bring these guys up to date, and we move on from there. Now, I want to remind the council and the clerk that before the investigation started and talking with Denise, we talked about paying her, and she said, you know, like, this is my hobby, what's the word, genie, I want you to club or something, yeah, that's what she, she has a club up at school, and I said, well, then we can donate, and so I think it's time that we think about that, and I was, I don't know what my spending limit is as president, do you guys know? I want to tell you, I'm gonna do it unless I can't, and I, I told everyone that we would give them a couple hundred dollars, and that would use by the club students in doing whatever they do. So, does anyone have a problem with that? I've also asked the township to kick in, and I think I gotta do a little work there, so.
Hope we can get results.
We'd debate a lot more if it went somewhere else.
Oh, yeah.
But you will, anyway, but she saved us a lot getting it to this point, right?
There's information...
It'll end up on Brian Graham.
The person who at one time had done some work, oh God, what's his name, Peter, the other lawyer?
Winland.
Peter Winland, and, you know, and I know what Brian Graham gets, at a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour, so what Denise has done is cheap, especially when she volunteered at the time. So that's where I am, and if, unless somebody tells me I don't have the right to do it, I'm going to instruct the clerk to draw a check for two hundred dollars, but I don't want to tell you yet to whom, how they want it, where it, I'll check with the school on that.
You don't need a motion on that because of spending money?
I think what I was referring to, Joe, was that as the president, as I did as superintendent, I had a spending limit. And I think I'm well within it here, no one really jumped out there with it, but if you guys want to make a motion, I don't care.
I'll make a motion, we approve paying two hundred dollars to the genie on the club at the school.
Oh, for it.
Chapman?
Yes.
Bonway?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Cruzing?
Yes.
Blamer?
Yes. Motion carried. So that's, that's all I have. Moving on, the bills, prepay bills, eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and ninety-two cents. Payroll, fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and two cents. Payroll's fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-seven cents, for a total of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and ninety-one cents. I need a motion.
You make a motion to pay the bills up there.
Second?
I'll second it.
And a motion and support?
Green?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Bonway?
Yes.
Cruzing?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Blamer?
Yes. Motion carries. New business. Okay, this is a good one. This is, this is very, this is a very good one.
That makes you happy.
Add Ken Cruzey as a signer on the village bank account as of November twentieth, and take off Larry Blamer's name.
What was that?
Nancy even fingerprinted it.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to remove her from the bank count and put Ken on effective November twentieth.
We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. B, replace DeClomas and Rod Thayer on the planning commission, I know that Ken taught...
Yeah, I, I had Rod's letter, I forgot to bring it. Rod, Rod resigned because he had to, there's only one person from the council on the planning commission, and Rod resigned, he'd just love it if I stayed and he left. But anyway, that's why Rod got off, not because he wanted, because there was only one person from the council on here. So it says replace, but it's more like letting everybody be aware that we need two people on our planning commission, and we really need them yesterday, and I know Vicki's interested because going through the update to the master plan and the rec plan, it's gonna look a whole lot better if we have our five people on this planning commission as we move forward, so.
Ken, knowing that Rod resigned, do we need to accept his resignation, even though we don't have...
I don't have the letter, boy, Rod resigned. That's my fault, Rod's sending it, I forgot to bring it.
That's all right.
We probably should formally accept it.
And a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Rod's resignation verbally. For the planning commission, all support.
And a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I would have one thing I want to say about that, is there one other position?
There's, there's two positions.
I would suggest that you take a look at the chamber, someone from there, and see if they might want to serve.
And what was the guy?
I think McGuire. Cruzing McGuire, Cruzing McGuire's the president of the chamber, and I think she does a pretty good job. I'm not saying she would serve, but that's...
I think they're a great idea, so unfortunately, people gotta...
Yeah, because like I said, we have a pick and choose here, so we have one, but we're still looking for one.
C, that says free, I think it should be tree, tree replacement project.
I see that it says free, I was wondering about that, three thousand dollars.
Well, that is free, it's a free tree. So, anyway, I don't know what we're gonna do, but someone should look into that, if you guys are interested.
Do we know, Larry, on this, is this for like sidewalks and stuff like that, so I'd be, some of the, drill with the sidewalk and street?
I think the streets are...
I think you send a quick email to... I think you send a quick email to Northern Lakes and they'll answer your question.
May I?
Yes.
If you talk to Ken Sted, Belair DPW, Janet Koch from Belair, she's the clerk, they know all about those grants. They just got one. They're planting the trees right now.
Great. And who's their street person? That's Denise. Okay, I'll delegate that, but afterwards. Okay, the next one then is the need to find a replacement for Candy Kehoe and.
We've got, we've got one named right now, so we're going to probably assign it to the street property since it's street funded.
Okay.
And we've got, but we are, we do need to find a replacement for Candy because obviously we have to have that doing care of. It's a must. We've budgeted, it's there, we just need to find somebody willing to do it for, or budget it out.
And that, that part, I did when I asked the garden club and I asked Jeanette Carl. And there's a gal down the end of our street who does Aldland and couldn't read her name on the note I got back, but I got her phone. She might be interested, but at the money that we pay, that might be her.
Should we put an ad in the paper also?
I think we probably should.
So, we made it available for anybody who.
You'll write that ad?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can make a note and put some kind of ad in the paper then. Have them, letters interest sent to you. Okay, action items, fast resolution of the treaty, authorized distribution of and right to approve or reject the village of Central Lake master plan. I'll let Ken talk.
I think everybody has that.